This is our... Oh, we're waiting.
Three hours.
Okay.
You did it.
Good.
All right. Clean this off? This.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And... I need to all... This is speed.
Yes, catch the damn roof cover.
All right. So, last month, we had six incidents, three arrests, one accident, ninety-five citations, four hundred and thirty calls for service, and state police assisted in three calls. This here, so this is the speed... We call it a speed box.
Yeah.
On Old Boys Road.
Yeah.
It's actually a black box that we strapped to a tree. Does not show people's speed, doesn't show anything, it's a black box. So they...
Yeah.
Most people don't notice it.
Right.
Well, Officer Westgate was really good in explaining how that whole works.
We had this up for a month, from October sixth through October fourteenth. Okay, the first two pages are... Tells you the speed limit on the road is thirty. The enforcement tolerance on the first page is ten miles an hour, the second page is thirteen. What that means is if they go over ten, that's something we would stop for speeding.
Right.
Second page is if they go over thirteen, that's what we would stop.
Yeah.
And basically, what it's telling you on the first page is percent speeding is only four percent. So only four percent of the cars are coming over ten miles per hour greater than the speed limit.
Yeah.
Second page, only one percent is going over thirteen miles an hour over the speed limit.
And that's all on that, but discuss this a little bit with Noah, that this is Old Boys Road. It's before the first sharp.
Yeah, it's before the dog.
The big long straightaway before the dog.
Before the dog, so it's equal to one bold way.
Yeah.
So that... The third page tells you at three thousand eight hundred point three, that's essentially... Well, that's essentially double.
Yeah.
Because they have to go out once they come in.
Right, there's double the way.
Okay. Slowest speeds, probably Amazon drivers.
Yeah, yeah.
Or anybody slowing down to turn into a driveway that happened to be right there. Fastest speed was eighty-eight.
And I know you found that was somebody like me who was late dropping off their dog. And was like, "Raaar!" Blowing back out of there.
Your average speed is thirty-one?
Yeah.
For the whole week? Your eighty-fifth percentiles thirty-six, enforcement rating as well. Just means that there's not a lot of speed going on that road.
So it's a thirty mile an hour road, and most people are going thirty-one miles an hour.
Twenty-seven, thirty-six is your pace speed.
Yeah. That's great.
It's really not... Yeah, there are people speeding, but it's not an everyday occurrence, and it's not throughout the whole day.
Okay, that's good to know. That was really good information from... How long did you have it up?
A week.
That's huge.
We are going to be bringing it on Hackleboro.
Yes, thank you.
If some needed it, so if they're using our app, then it's theirs. They're going to bring it up there soon enough.
Hackleboro says, "Thank you." That'd be great.
Is there any research if it comes up?
The hill going from like my driveway before the Orchard Road up. Because I think a lot of people pick up speed to get up the hill, but then coming down, it's like, "Ooh."
The Orchard is on the straightaway?
The Orchard is... You're coming up the hill, and you're kind of curving gently, but you are... That seems to be the biggest...
Okay, because it's going to be as somewhat a straightaway as it approaches.
Um, yeah, you could do from...
Will you go before the turn?
From Abbott to...
Okay.
To the Orchard Road, you can probably tell you.
Yeah. Near Abbott, no?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because if anybody's picking up speed coming up the hill, like sometimes the big logging trucks, they're going to be booking it when they go past the Orchard Road.
And then didn't we get compared to Old Gilmington? From a resident of that way?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, speeding?
Speeding.
On the lower end, I guess, I think?
Uh, I think he had a person that he had identified.
Yeah, he... He was pretty sure he knew who it was. Was going to say it was on the lower end. He was... Yeah, I think he was on the lower end.
Yeah.
Lower end of the road and low in the peaks.
Yeah, because if it's the upper end, they typically take care of themselves up there.
Yeah.
Mr. Perry was in. Um, he's on the lower end. Okay. And that's what he said, Mr. Lower End. All right.
But he was also concerned about someone on an electric bike or scooter?
Youngster on an electric bike. I talked to him, made contact with him.
Okay, good.
Talked to the electric bike? I mean, not much, we did not... Did any rules?
No, no.
But we had some.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, anything else we need to know about that's working?
We'll put that back out as soon as Epsom's done with it.
Okay.
Okay, now the results of that.
Great, thank you.
So, the only question there now is, um, the purchase of one for the town itself. Right. This one was...
Ah, I don't remember.
It was like four thousand and sixty, like it was a...
Yeah, this one, I think, was close to six thousand.
Oh, it depended, did it have the laptop or not?
Well, we don't need the laptop. I have a laptop.
Oh, perfect.
Disconnect mine.
So if... Whether you want to try and spend some money this year or put it in the budget for next year. All right. You were investigating our grant?
You were working on it, so we have to... So highway six here, I mean, we're doing a budget. We have to get approval for this quarter to be eligible for the grant for that this quarter. Um, so we're working on that.
Yeah.
I think it would depend on, you know, again, when we get the next round of budget, what we have left. And if Epsom is willing to lend, loan it until like the next budget cycle, that'd be great. But, you know, if we can afford it, I would say it seems worth it.
Yeah, if they don't mind letting us use it, it should... Obviously, we're going to be using it constantly, that's the pain there. If I set it up, see, I'm bringing a laptop, we should get users.
Yeah.
So it's not like you can just give it to me and have me set it up. I don't have the...
Right, right.
Top part software.
Yeah.
And I'll have to walk in and all that. So they have to actually come up here and set it up. So I obviously don't want to take advantage of that either.
No, no. Let's see where the budget shakes out, because it seems like a very useful tool.
It can be, and essentially, like I said, it's not like we're writing tickets off it, but it's, "Hey, so I'm supposed to complain about speed." Okay, let's put this out here. And we may not need it for a month or two. Whenever someone says, "Hey, we got a lot of speed on this road." Okay, we have this, we'll see. And if there is speeding, it'll tell us a timeframe. So we'll know when we can stay out here, because, yeah, so much speed here in the road will win. Most people say, "All over there." Can't sit out there all corrupt and bad.
Yeah.
So if we can narrow it down to a timeframe, okay, that's easier for me to tell an officer, go, "Hey, go sit on the road between this hour and this hour." Yeah. So it's a helpful tool to at least narrow down what we're looking for.
Well, and as you've mentioned, Scott, it depends too. People think that people are going a lot faster than they are, and this seems to really prove otherwise. Now, maybe they are cutting them close as they're walking on the side, but...
It's part of the truth.
And where we don't have sidewalks, I mean, it does.
Our shoulders.
Pretty narrow to begin with.
Yeah.
But we talked about doing the other road signs on the corners and things like that. But that's past where most people would be speeding, because it's a nice long straightaway.
It is.
And they're not, so that's good. Good, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Bill.
All right.
Sure, thanks. Chief, I know you've got training tonight.
I was looking at you, Chief Gamache, and thinking, um... I was doing road sign stuff this afternoon, I wanted to print out the thank you notes I have so that we could sign them.
Gotcha.
And we have them.
Okay.
I'll get them.
Yeah, okay. Sure, I'll be brief tonight. Two hundred and seventy-four emergency incidents to date. And no more accidents in the last month. We had, I think, three different carbon monoxide scares.
Oh.
And two of them are active leaks, and, um, thank goodness they have detectors in their homes. So this is a reminder, and I put it out on social media, I put in the newsletter, "Carbon monoxide is odorless, tasteless, um, you can't smell it." Obviously, you know, and it's a sonic pill, as they call it. So carbon monoxide detectors in your home, uh, and, you know, we put it out there, we'll go out and help anyone. And I have access to free devices if people can't afford it. And you go out and you help them install them in their home, or even just install them for them if they're unable to. So... Can't emphasize that enough. Been in the interstate half a dozen times since the last time I saw you. Uh, the most recent one was this morning, medics at eighteen, ended up being a fatal twenty-year-old girl. In case of my crews that did respond there, um, you know, those are always difficult. Sometimes you see they're human children, see, uh, they work hard to save a life. It's very disingenuous, you know.
I read it, that's...
Uh, so, but those incidents are never easy, so, um, but I had a crew out there this morning at one o'clock.
Well, that's where your training all kicks in too, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, prior to emergency week, they category the elementary school demo as well. We put a hundred and twenty-seven children through. Uh, the fire marshal's office came now with their dog. Julie saw some pictures on social media, I can sum up. It was, um, it went very well, very well received. We're doing a jewelry school next week, we do that annually. Uh, those are the preschool age children, there's about thirty of them. We do a demonstration there. Uh, tailored to their age group, obviously. Uh, tomorrow is the elementary school annual inspection that has to be done by December fifteenth and submitted to the state fire marshal's office, so I'm doing that tomorrow. They're on a gain, we're on a pretty safe ship, so there's very rarely any issues open there for clues to Principal Chubb and his staff doing that. And the burning bed, even though we have a day of raining, is still in effect. Still from the notice. Still seeking new members. Um, and then under the last setting, the Labman Project with the ambulance, I'm still working on that. We're finalizing the contract, and that's still moving forward for January first takeover. I should have a set plan for the next month at this time. Uh, working to redo our local emergency operations plan, which is required by law every five years. Our last one was two thousand and twelve, uh, so we're going on fourteen years. Uh, it's something with, you know, the emergency plan discusses what happens in many events of large scale or using town, you're putting something on paper, but not having one affect your ability to access future grants and future resources from government. So it's important that we keep that up to date. I identified several issues that needed to be done, but keeping, riding the ship up there and keeping things going, uh, this became a background, a low priority project. Uh, now, Ken and I have been talking, and we're committed to getting this done by the end of two thousand and twenty-six. So we are on that. We spoke to a company today that kind of works and does that with us, so we'll move forward with that. Uh, driveway numbering, uh, meeting that new driveways, it seems like I'm doing one a week now for the last, probably since this May. Um, you know, people wanting to go to houses or garage permits and all that stuff, so that's... You know, for every single one, I could go out and measure from the next driveway to the other one and do a map, um, uh, amount calculation and assign a number or enter it into the state near base. And they got to come out, we got to pin it for a nine-one-one, so it's a process. Uh, they do even one, so... But they're not random numbers taken out of a hat.
No. I don't think people know that, that usually has something to do with how the distance from here...
It's pretty in-depth, it's pretty in-depth. Uh, West Road Development, I spent, uh, probably half a day last week working with the developer, and they're looking for input on the fire side of things, so I contacted the fire marshal's office. I got some information later this afternoon, kind of, maybe seven p.m. It's a little pun-eruded, it's not reading for the average person, so... So we'll try to sum it up, and when it comes time to make it a delivery and talk from there, so... But they, you know, I'm going to work with them, but hopefully that, um, you know, they provide some fire protection out there. Um, let's see, the river signage will be coming out in the next couple of weeks. Obviously, people want to see this time of year. Uh, did we talk, recently talked a lot about it a couple of minutes ago, but small but C O detectors, uh, and we put it out, and I'm going to probably put it in the November newsletter, but, I mean, the November newsletter, that we have them available, if you can afford to buy one in your home, um, we have them available.
Have you sent me your news yet?
Not yet, no.
It's time.
I know it is, I know it is. That should keep me on my pulse, I appreciate it.
If I don't find it from you, I'll put in again what you read last month.
Every time I look at things, I think it might be better.
I know. I try to keep everybody safe.
Good. Uh, next month, I'll be heading the annual carbon monoxide summit, it's a day-long summit for about lessons and classes of people who work in the industry, uh, and it's really good valuable information. So Herb and I are going to that next month. Uh, reporting platform is changing, it's a national emergency response incident platform, and that's changing, so there's a lot of computer stuff and stuff that I'm working on. We seem to get that done. And November is our auto extrication training month. We usually have Rusty's towing, done two truck cars in the front lot, and we kind of spend two separate Mondays working with our extracations, cutting doors and taking moves off and popping doors and all that stuff, so it'll be the first two Mondays in the month that we'll be doing that. And that's all I have.
Wait, don't go away. I gotta write this down, because I want to come.
Well, I'll shoot you our email reminder.
Yes, please do. But it is, I'll number two. Um, two things, what did N E R I S stand for?
Uh, National Emergency Reporting Incident System.
Okay, thank you. And what, when you're redoing the E O P, what exactly constitutes an emergency? Because I'm thinking again, like last winter, we had a couple of severe storms, power went out, we had people who were complaining, there were people who were cold. I mean, what rises to a level of an emergency that would go?
Long-term power outage, uh, two of them. Um, roads closed because of winds, it's very extended period, five people saw them because of the snow. Remember Mac River, the Franklin Falls Dam failing and, you know, having things down there, so that's available. Uh, it's what that is. Isn't this really just a blueprint? We call it the emergency tapping, we're not taking over, opening a free refiner and saying, "What do we do now?" I mean, it's just kind of like a blueprint?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Richard, you want to go next?
May I?
Please.
Do you want to go just have my trustees come?
That's what I figured.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, first and foremost, I want to give a big thank you to the board of selectmen and Calvin, who came to my office, had some big questions about the budget, um, had big questions about library governance and how the trust works and how, uh, friends of the library works, and we spent an hour and a half together. Um, he, I really thank him for that, because he really took the time to ask some questions. He was surprised by the answers, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
That he took the time to try to understand it, and he actually, I have him with some answers to his questions. So, thank you for that, I always welcome that. If there are any questions that any of you have, um, that I haven't covered with Ken or Beth, you know, please, I welcome that. So that was, that was my big thanks.
Good.
Um, I did make the November newsletter, which I submitted earlier today. Um, Lauren Prosper is a new hire, Cal helped me so well with new hire paperwork. Um, Lauren Prosper has been hired as the children's room assistant, twenty-six hours a week, because that's all I could kind of navigate, um, with some of my other employees, employees changing their hours. I was able to move Lauren in and just absolutely had a huge need, uh, for an extra body. You know, children's programs are attracting thirty to forty youngsters, um, and that's not their caregivers and grandparents in their grandparents. So we're pulling sixty people into, and we need staff to help facilitate that. So, um, she, it's an ideal situation, and I'll announce that to the town, because she was our only Canterbury native. I'm a pure in second grade, so Lauren, um, is a real child of the Falcons.
And I can say that the newsletter has not yet begun to go to press, so if you want to put it in, just...
So I might have time.
You do have time.
Lauren, may I? Okay, then.
Quickly, if I can fit it on your page without having to cut out too much other stuff?
Yeah, I might read it.
All right.
Um, but thank you. Um, I want to update my carbon monoxide monitor.
Yes, you do.
That's another one I just put on there. Um, oh, Ken had asked me to talk to the U T L representative, the P R guy, um, spoke with him. Wicked nice guy, um, and I haven't checked the U T L website, but I think it might already be up there.
I haven't checked it either.
So this was, uh, it was freelance hire, uh, that U T L hired to just, um, positively promote the grant that we received for the weatherization. Um, and they wanted some little soundbites, and they took some pictures, and she came and met with me. Ken had asked me to do that, it was great, because I could answer his questions, most of which is that we have noticed the difference tremendously. With that first few cold days, we're not having to wear hats and mittens inside. Um, we're not having to use space heaters. Um, we noticed it the minute we got the weatherization in terms of acoustics. That was not something we anticipated, that, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I just didn't think about that. But there was absolutely no soft substances other than carpet up until the bottom of the flat seat. So acoustically, it's improved, uh, cooling-wise, Ed mentioned that, the farmer, not the farmer's...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It was a significant, so again, thank you for that. And I think it'll be a pretty nice story, um, when it comes out. He sent me the copy of it, um...
Send me a link when it comes?
I will, I will, I got to look it down. He was also freelance for Human Leader, so he wasn't sure if he was going to try to sell to Human Leader as well, but it will definitely be on the U T L website.
Perfect.
Um, do, do. Um, Ken and I talked earlier about capital improvement plan twenty twenty-seven. Um, I'm announcing it official. Um, I'm not going for a more article next year to help with my heating. My boiler is still working, it's twenty-third year. It's not efficient, we know we need to replace it. But if I didn't have to put forward any... You know, the trust, the trustees are willing to pay half. I'm also asking them for our significant wage, uh, participation, and I'd rather not ask them for all that money in the same year. That trust contribution will be continuous, um, but they want to pay a lot of the heating. So that's been going twenty twenty-seven. Ken and I talked about that earlier. Um, Chief Gamache reminded me that this is probably stuff I'm good to report to you in terms of when he's adding, um, nine-one-one members. Um, I'm up to ninety-eight, as of today, ninety-eight new patient accounts in this year alone. That is entire households, that's not individuals, because we do family accounts. So that's an entire household, um, whether they're moving into an existing house, whether they're building a new house. Uh, but ninety-seven is a lot. Um, last year was eighty-two, the year before that was sixty-one. So since COVID, uh, in the last five years, we've experienced more than fifty, which traditionally it was maybe thirty patron accounts. So, um, we're up to one thousand two hundred and forty-two registered households, which is not too bad considering we have twenty-three hundred residents. So we feel really good about that.
One thousand two hundred and forty-two households?
Uh, one thousand two...
Yes, households, patron. Wow.
So that's, um, I'd have to look at our state statistics to show, you know, what percentage of our population, but... Just simple math, we tell us it's a pretty darn good. Um, so we find ourselves in the midst of our usually busy programming schedule, but Halloween events, Polar Express, Mrs. Claus, um, we're gearing up for those events. And we were so pleased to hear that the tree lighting is not the same night as Polar Express. So...
Please tell me it's not the night after Thanksgiving.
It's, oh, we are not. The tree lighting is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Polar Express...
Oh, no, I remember it was crazy last year.
Which was great. So that was kind of a, a problem we were having, um, just in terms of, you know, it's a wonderful problem to have, but I don't know if you've noticed in this town, like, any given night, when I drive out here at like seven or eight o'clock at night, there's like three things happening all the time. It's such a busy place, which is a wonderful problem to have. Um, and I think that's all I have. Any questions for me?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Sam.
Sam?
Say hello to the trustees.
I'm John. Thank you.
Unpaid receivables. A lot changed since the last time. I'm finding a lot of taxes. Hopefully, when tax rate gets up and starts saying all bills are going to be the rule. Remember that.
Yeah. So, um, I think the last time we talked about taxes, I asked if you had any contact with Bureau. Still not. When would they go up for D D? Could be twenty twenty-seven?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah. All right.
And what about the luring?
Twenty twenty-six.
When do the bills go out from the next?
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet, yeah.
So we're on tax rate.
Then I won't spend my money?
Nope. Any questions for me? Nothing is for me?
I don't think so, no.
I have a question. Yeah, we have election coming up. This is March. Just March, nothing, nothing November.
Next year.
Little bit of a recipe, John.
I didn't know about sitting down there or up there.
Yeah, I think we're all okay with that. It was a year last year. You good?
Yes, I just saw a name that I wasn't expecting, so that's close. Okay.
Okay.
Sir. We're going to try and ship some paper or cardboard tomorrow. Maybe?
Maybe?
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Salt sheds coal. My phone says snow next week.
It does not.
Or the two inches, once the...
Here. Okay, great.
It'll change by then.
Yeah, yeah.
The rain's been gone.
Little bit of surprise on the packer inspection, six thousand dollars worth.
What was that for, John?
Rear brakes, rear springs, uh, sensor.
Okay.
Yeah, the longer it stayed there, the more they looked, stopped looking.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah. And the loader, right, or you're probably going to talk about that anymore?
Oh, we can mention the loader, um, I called, uh, the dealer, uh, because we're leaking, uh, brake fluid out of the master cylinders into the axles.
Yeah.
So to reseal is four thousand an axle.
An axle?
Per, there's two axles.
Oh, Jesus.
And that's not doing brakes, that's just resealing. And, uh, but the articulation bearings is gone, especially in the bottom. And when that happens, the front drive shaft collapses too far, and basically the machine stopped running at that point. Um, the last time we did this, we took the drive shaft off and ran it with rear-wheel drive for a while, but wasn't impressive.
I'll bet.
Invented though.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, that's sixty-eight hundred dollars. But that's just ball facts, and they don't know until they get in there if they get a line board and such. So, uh, if you're looking at the new budget, it went back to the forty-five hundred for regular maintenance, and then fifteen for network. If I've got money this year, I'd love to send it down before December.
I think that might be our answer on the black box for, uh...
Um, because I was talking, um, we'd like to see it hang around for a couple more years. Uh, the backhoe's doing the loader work. And we planned that way, but...
Yeah.[1763.34] John, the loader though, you use it, I know, to put the... The spreader. Thank you, the spreaders.
Yeah, for loading sand and salt in the winter time. That's its major work. And Dave uses it for moving the boxes and compacting. That's the only thing I use right now to move the trailers.
Did the backhoe do that though?
It could do everything but move the trailers.
Okay, wow. That's a lot more, they could lift a lot more weight than I thought for the backhoe.
So if you need to move the trailers, then what do you do? What do we have to move the trailers?
I would attempt to call someone with a truck. It hasn't been successful in years past. Yeah. Most of the trucks are up and running, we're starting to get some ready for winter. And we're grading as we can. I had a resident call because Lila was coming in a little late. The end of Ayers Road, the Class 6 section. She was in the very last house. Somehow the cars are able to drive even further. Now, it's quite, yeah, it's quite a drop off off the Class 6 section to her driveway. And they're going down there and it's...
Are they getting back out?
They're getting back out. They're leaving undergarments and such. So she's not impressed with the activity, let's say. Didn't know if they could gate it or such. And it says, "Class 6 Road." Still public access and where they don't actually own that.
Where does the end of that, where does Ayers, does it go through?
It, it goes through to Borough, but in the very bottom, there's two old Bridge of Buckmans and no bridge. And there's a beaver dam higher than, when you're standing there, you can't see over it. You're trying to say something.
We... Beth and I, and this was gonna call a little later, attended a webinar on Class 6 roads. The town can put gates up, it can be subject to gates and bars. Gates can't be blocked.
Right.
It's a deterrent for people that aren't gonna get out of their cars and go up and check the gate. But that's the best.
Okay, so that's a little stronger than what I said to her because I didn't see her having livestock trying to cross and that was the reason for gates and bars before. Basically livestock control.
Yeah.
But you can't, what I can't remember about, off the top of my head is, do you have to vote to have it, have, put up the gates and bars? Or is, are they all subject to gates?
Any Class 6 road is subject to gates and bars. But again, they can't be blocked, it's really to keep as long as people want us.
Well, it's...
If you're having problems.
If it's partiers and they seem to be having problems and...
Whether we deter, it'd be hard to deter.
Unless you...
And then the cost. There's a cost obviously associated with putting something like that.
Yeah.
What do you do otherwise if there's a problem with people partying down there, which could be a problem, somebody gets hurt and they're down in the...
So enforced by the police. It's a public way, we can't stop them from going down there. But if they're illegal activity, you know, trash or something like that, that's the only thing you can do.
Can our little black box go down there and see what the traffic is actually on the end of Ayers Road? Maybe it's, I'm, but wow. Okay.
I can mention that to the police chief. They don't have, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put any of our SUVs down there, I wouldn't.
That was a pretty good draw.
Yeah.
How the cars leaking?
You know, that's what, she's surprised too.
Yeah.
Which is more concerning to her why. And it's not just once, it's been multiple.
I'll talk with John, try and get better with the chief and see if, you know, we can talk to the resident and see if there's specific days or times.
And it seems like it's a big accident waiting to happen on that.
Does she see the vehicles, John, when they go down there?
She has seen the vehicle. And they're also going down Windfall. The logger over there is having issues.
I was just thinking maybe if she calls when she sees a vehicle. Cause I know we can't give order to officers in the city.
And there's a logging road to the left of her driveway. And I says, I'm surprised they don't go that way because it looks like the continuation of the road. And it's much more drivable and they're not going there.
Maybe it's too obvious.
So whether they're following Google and have found this spot and like it or what? I'm looking at my phone because I got a text. Ayers Road reclaiming 1028, paving 1030, Borough Road paving 1031, Hackle Borough 112.
There you go.
Thank you.
That's what I got.
That's a lot.
It is.
Glad I don't own heavy equipment because it just sounds like it's just waiting to break.
Only because you used it.
Only because you used it. Wow, right.
Plain.
Thanks, John. Do you think you want to sign stuff?
Sure.
You're gonna yell at me because I had a jump, but I just have a question.
Sure.
Do we need to talk, lights at the highway garage while we have Monsieur Le Highway here with us?
That's actually really good thinking. Thank you for noticing, if you want.
I don't, I just didn't know if you were...
I was hanging.
If you had to weigh in on the conversation so long as you're here. I don't wanna mess up your careful...
So we got the total for the estimate for the lights. It was $10,990 with three motion lights. We talked about, one of the doors does not have a light switch next to it, the door that they use most of the time. So the thought was that we would put a motion for that one. And then there's a pass door on one of the garage doors. So that might be a good place for motion light. And then there is a pass door now at the fire end of the bay on the west side of the building. It has light switches, but we thought of putting in. So the total would, the motions are fairly expensive, but it's $11,815 for the motions, for those three motions and the rest of them. Unitil will pay $5,000 as a rebate and finance the balance on the electric bill. I don't know how long that is, is gonna go.
Yeah, and is there interest?
I don't know. So, but that's, now, the, we, we would have to come up with the money upfront. We have, our, our building maintenance line for that building is over budget already because we had to replace the septic pumps and the water softener. We do have $16,000 left in the building maintenance gap reserve. That would more or less defeat that fund. But as it is stands now, there's only eight lights working.
Pretty much down to that in the building.
So I don't, I'm not sure what our options are.
Well, the guy, they have to have lights. I mean, we, we all know that.
More lights.
They have to have lights that they can see to work and not trip over something or have something fall on them.
We have not put money in the building maintenance fund. I'm sorry, we did, we put $5,000 in '25. If we do this, I think we'll have to add to that for '26. I think we'd have to put $10,000 in at least to get the build back up a little bit.
Yeah, and I think as the building ages, unfortunately.
That was my first thought too, it's not getting any younger.
Operating budget, we have to bump the maintenance line a little bit.
Yeah, I think so as well, yeah.
Our well pump, we replaced the well pump in, I think, 2016. And the well company was surprised it lasted as long as it did. There's so much iron in the water. So, to me, that would probably be the next pretty expensive one.
Yeah, yeah.
And that too would come out of that building maintenance fund, yeah.
Most likely, yeah. We did have an energy audit of the building. One company went through, the energy committee would like to have a second auditor company come through. They're looking at the lights in the office portion of the building and the heating systems. So we'll see what happens there. And we're also asking that we look at fans for the high days in the garage, in the highway garage and the fire department.
Are the, is, the highway department is considered high days too, is correct? John, can I come up and get a tour? I haven't been in that part of the building in forever.
Probably not tomorrow morning.
No, not tomorrow morning. I can guarantee you it will be tomorrow morning. I'll, I'll text you soon.
They're there at 6:30.
No, no. I'm still drinking coffee then and coming to.
That's okay.
They drink coffee.
I'll bring coffee, how about that, so more. I'll bring coffee if you give me a door. All right.
All right, so what do we need to...
So I, I, the electrician is waiting for you guys to determine what you wanna do. And then if it's a go, then I will apply Unitil. We'll get things going and the electrician will schedule it in. He has a lift, so he doesn't have a mechanical lift. He would be ready within a couple weeks to do it. He'd have to apply the insurance.
Right, so what do you think?
Well, it seems like it's something that we need to do. The only thing I would say is I would be curious to see if they're gonna finance the rest of it, if there, what the interest is because there's going to be interest and...
That is certainly actually. I suppose.
It may be no interest.
Oh, well, then that would be great.
It kinda surprised you that they were even gonna do that.
Yeah. So I would say we've gotta, we've gotta proceed with that and do we need to wait to find out what actually, I mean, you know what's in that line. But even if we don't vote to put more in there, can we squeak by with, if we take the 11 grand out? I mean, how soon before we would get the 5,000 rebate?
It doesn't take too long, they're usually within a couple months.
Oh, all right. I, I can't see you working in the dark all winter if... It doesn't seem to make much sense. Then we're going to have something else broken and something fall on your foot and then we're really gonna be in trouble, so that would not be good. So I would, I would say if we can do it, this, this seems reasonable. Calvin? No, he says yes.
Do you think? Okay, all right. All right. All right, so let's go back to signing. Thank you. All right, I've got an account payable manifest in the amount of $62,515.18.
I so moved.
All right, I'll second, all those in favor.
Aye.
All right.
Signing agree. I mean, sparkly pen would be better.
All right, next is a payroll manifest in the amount of $52,568.88.
So moved.
I'll second, all those in favor.
Aye.
All right. Just minutes.
Yes, sir. Oh, I didn't think you could do a copy.
Okay, I read it this afternoon, actually. I know you had some, yeah, I didn't have anything that I saw.
Here's just a couple of things.
I'm just gonna look at my phone.
They're, they're pretty simple, which is why I printed out. So on line 64, I say, placement of a, of a "Your Speed Is" sign. Just putting in parentheses after that, an electric, a flashing electric sign which detects speed and displays it, just to explain what exactly I'm talking about. And then on line 108, it said, "A few people who are bad at estimating speed change 'bad at estimating speed' to not experience the estimating speed of cars passing them while they are walking." Cause that's, yeah. And then the last one is on line 197, "The select board decided not to make an exception for political signs, change it to, this select board decided that political signs should not be allowed on town and property in the center." So it's pretty, pretty simple changes and a bunch of grammatic ones.
Sounds good to me. All right, I'll make a motion to accept that it says a minute.
I will second that.
All those in favor, aye.
And then you've got the, so that's for the October 6th minutes and then you have the October 10th minutes.
That's right.
Very, very well done. No changes were suggested.
All right, so I'll make the motion to accept those minutes.
I will second that.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All right. All right, I think that's everything we had to sign, right? That's the CIP. All right, Ken, you wanna talk about?
Sure, that webinar. So Beth and I watched it, it was, what, an hour?
Yeah, yeah.
Put on by HMA, a couple of their attorneys, their staff attorneys. Not a lot of new information from my perspective, but if anybody, I think Beth and I talked about it, it would be good, we will get copies of the webinar. And we have, and it was a PowerPoint that went along with it. We would like to get that out to the planning board as well as the ZDA. There is one thing, because of the change of legislation as far as building on Class 6 roads, that's going to take effect July 1st of 2026. And that is gonna be an important distinction for the planning board as well as ZDA, as well as you guys to determine whether we can put a building, house on or not.
Well, and they were very clear that, you know, there's, that the town still does have a lot of control so long as you have your ordinances in effect. And, and that you are set before this deadline.
And our, our building ordinance does say that we need, you need frontage on a Class 5 or better road, says that right now. So if you wanted to build on a Class 6 road, even if you met the requirements of the new law, you would need a variance. So it's not just a get out of jail free card, it's just, you would, you would still be, you would need a variance. As it stands now, that process, you guys kinda go around that process by allowing the waiver and the road improvement plan. So, but in the future, they would need a variance if they met all the other requirements of the law.
It also led into, it was very interesting, I thought, the whole discussion about what it meant to have a property be insurable. And, you know, what, what are the restraints on that? Can you just say you're insured or can you self-insure, whatever? They, they covered that in great detail, which I thought was very helpful to know.
So in theory, after the new law takes effect, if someone goes through the ZDA, ZDA approves them, does the select board still get to weigh in or is...
They would, the select board would weigh in during the ZDA process and the variance process. The road waiver, Class 6 road waiver is still, or private Class 6 private road waiver is still required. So as part of our policy, as it stands now, it's the road waiver as well... That, so, as part of our policy as it stands now, it's the road waiver as well as the road improvement plan. I don't know, I think we have to check and see if you can still enforce the road improvement plan.
Right.
Um, I think that was part of, part of the general discussion as far as the waiver was concerned was that with the, and, and this is the reason why the, the road improvement plan was put into effect was that most, in most cases, emergency services would try to reach the property. And with the cost of emergency vehicles at a million plus now.
Yep.
Um, the towns are saying, yes, we know the private department is gonna try and reach the, the property, and we'd like to have that road in some kind of condition where a fire truck could potentially reach that mark and not do a whole bunch of damage to it. And that's, that's why we put the road improvement plan into, into effect many years ago. I don't know if that can still be required on.
But the fact that you can require and have also frontage on a class five road, to me is huge because in those class six roads that go out into the middle of nowhere, you really can't, it's not, as you say, it's not a get out of jail free card to just build there.
Yeah.
Still have to meet other requirements. You just have to make sure that you actually have that requirement.
Right, and, and we do now, so.
Yeah.
But again, I think Beth and I both agreed that this would be a good, uh, webinar for the planning board as well as ZBA to, to, uh, watch it.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds.
As soon as it becomes available, we'll, we'll get it and Beth was gonna, we're gonna print out the PowerPoints and Beth was gonna make some notes on them, uh, from her notes that she took. And, uh, we'll try and give a whole package to each, each board.
That sounds good.
You should have a viewing guide here on, with popcorn. It's fun, I've done it before.
Team building.
It is.
Alright, next letter from resident regarding certificate of occupancy. I did read your email, assuming you did.
Uh, I didn't read the, did I read the email? We talked about it this morning, so.
We did. So, the letter here is from a resident, um, he's not the property owner, his daughter is the property owner, but, um, I guess he's representing her or whatever, but, um, says to Canterbury Sluckman, I'm trying to get a CO on seventeen Nottingham Road. Uh, Joel French, the building inspector, sent me a letter stating, uh, um, that the letter, that, that, uh, would not issue a CO. I have the letter here. After receiving the building plans and assessing data, Canterbury zoning rules and the state of Manhattan ADU laws, in two thousand twenty-five, Manhattan House 577, the ADU request does not fall within the requirements of the rules due to the square footage of each floor is greater than a thousand square feet. The building size thirty by forty is twelve hundred square feet per floor. You can apply for a, um, conditional use permit or special exception, which I talked to the building inspector and it should be a variance.
Yeah.
And due to there not being an open pre-communication between the two floors, I cannot issue a certificate of occupancy for a single-family residence. So during construction, the building inspector visited the property and informed the builder and the resident, or the owner, that they needed at the time, a, uh, stairway leading from the first floor down to the second floor where the ADU is. Um, they did not install that, um, so they did not get a certificate of occupancy. The law changed, um, that allows an ADU to be, an attached ADU without, uh, common access. However, there is still a restriction in Canterbury on ADUs, attached ADUs, it can, it can only be a thousand square feet.
And this is what, twelve hundred?
Pardon me?
Twelve hundred.
And this is twelve hundred square feet. So, however, the utility room in question, um, is sixteen by sixteen, so it would drop the square footage below the thousand square foot, um, limit. But, uh, I sent a note to, um, legal and asked them, does New Hampshire law state that, uh, it has to be just an ADU, just living space, or is utility room? They, their answer was, uh, says based on your local ordinance and practice, the law does not provide such specific definitions of what space will be considered part of the square footage analysis. I spoke with the building inspector this morning, his opinion is still the same, uh, for one specific reason, and that was, um, this utility room serves the entire building. If there was to be a problem with the HVAC system, heating, plumbing, whatever is in the utility room, it would require access through the ADU. There are tenant laws that, that require notification for landlord to access the tenant's property, um, and he feels that that could be a problem if, if the furnace went down in the middle of the winter and the tenant wasn't available to allow the landlord to access the building, or the tenant infuse.
Right. So there is no exit to the outside?
There is pro from the, yeah. I'll have a floor.
From the utility room, but there is obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So here is the floor plan, you can see the utility room is in the very center of the building.
Yeah.
So this shows, it's a walkout, uh, basement. So this is the, a covered porch, this is the entrance into the, into the ADU, the lower unit.
Yeah.
So you have living space, and then the utility room is in the far corner and you can see there's no access to the exit, the outside of the building from there.
Yeah.
The owner of the property and, um, Mr. Pelkey were not available.
So Joel believes it should be included as, in the footprint of the ADU, as?
Yes, it should, it should count as, so we put it at twelve hundred square.
Right.
Okay, so that's the utility room.
Which is also, looks like pretty much storage too. So, storage, I'm assuming for the entire house or just for the ADU?
I don't know.
I mean, it would, it wouldn't make sense if there's no access from upstairs where it to be storage for the upstairs.
I wouldn't think so.
So, in, in, in lieu of information, let us assume, since that's all we can do, is that if this is only got access from the ADU and it's used, it looks like mostly for storage.
Well, no, they've got, you know, there's a, um, somewhere in one of the pictures, like the boiler, looked like electric panels.
There's, it shows, like, yeah.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
Yeah.
So it looks like one whole wall is all, uh, utilities and then you have some shelter for storage and this blank wall here.
Right.
I mean, I, I, this is the first time I've, I've had to really think about something like this, but if the only access to this space is through the ADU, I would count it as part of the ADU, even if the equipment in there is servicing the top part of that.
That's where the building inspector was landing.
I mean, if there was another, an exterior access and this door could be locked and it was only available from the outside and these people didn't get to use it, I'd say no, but that's not the case.
Right.
I mean, they could easily put exercise equipment in there or whatever.
Yeah.
So I would intend, I would, I would include it. But then what does that mean? So we say it's included and then it's above the limit of the, uh, square footage for an ADU, what happens?
So it could not be an ADU and it would be in violation as only. It would not get a, a certificate of occupancy and it would be in violation as only, so we go through that process.
And, I'm sorry, Ken, who was the letter from?
The letter was from Michael Pelkey and the owner is Donald Lockrow.
And you think this is for father representation?
I believe it is, yes.
I agree with Joel's reasoning.
It makes sense to me too.
Alright.
So I will draft a letter to Mr. Pelkey advising him that you agree with the building inspector and
Yeah.
that he can run with the building inspector to try and come up with a reasonable.
And maybe able to come up with a plan, but.
Maybe they'll come up with a plan.
Is there, um, I can't really tell from the floor plan, not exactly from the, um, pictures either, is there a way to create an, act of doorway from the utility room to the outside?
No.
There is no, it's in the back into the.
No, this is a walkout. Walkout basement, that's underground.
That's the back, the back is.
The only way you can do it would be to put in a, some kind of stairwell, uh, going up to the first floor from the utility room, like a circular stair, which would give the access.
Oh, that's where the, okay, got it.
Or to cut a hole in the concrete wall, put a bulkhead in.
Yeah.
So if it had a bulkhead and then you could lock that door from the inside so that the landlord could access the moving things?
Yeah.
Then I'd say, alright, then I would take it out at the square footage, but otherwise.
Go ahead.
No.
Alright. Alright, well, we got center side policy update.
Um, I have one more new business.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Uh, I got an email from the energy committee, um, they, uh, this is, uh, they said there's another company, they thought about doing audit up at the municipal building, uh, but they also do audits for the streetlights.
Right.
Um, and the energy committee needs a letter on town letterhead saying affinity LED lighting, that's permission to speak with unitil regarding our streetlights. So, I didn't see an issue with it, I typed up the letter, um, I signed it, it's in my office up there, I can send it on Wednesday and tomorrow.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good to us. Alright.
Uh, both, um, Ruth, um, and Beth talked with the identity people.
Great. Okay, alright, thank you.
Uh, but they can also do, um, that's for doing the LED lighting, but they can also do another audit on the municipal building.
Yes.
They, for free, about fluorescent lighting.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. We'll send it this morning. Alright, uh, center side policy update. I think we've got. So I think where we left it after our meeting at, uh, the center was we, we'd like to speak with the, uh, historic district commission to get their thoughts on what we discussed in terms of signage.
And I actually have, um, I didn't bring it, um, but, and I thought it'd be easier if I emailed it to you. I also had a bunch of additional questions about kinds of signs that we will want to consider under this.
Yeah.
Like, again, um, say the school, because the school had a, an event for their trunk or treat and they had little plastic signs that somebody had hand lettered and they stuck one in the center and, you know, so I, so there's the school, um, you know, I think we need to be clear about things like the giant pancake breakfast sign, um, or things like that nature, and I had a list of like six or seven things that I think we need to consider if, in this policy that we need to be fairly specific, um, about. So, I'll, I'll send that along.
Okay, that sounds good.
And I also, um, just emailed you this afternoon the photos that I took that day of, um, the center.
Yep.
So, and then the, the mockups of Calvin and what might be.
Yeah.
So I think you can get a sense of the scale and you can also get a sense of what it would look like coming up from Kimball Pond Road and also a sense of how much information somebody might be able to, is that useful?
Right.
It looks better, but is it actually useful? So, um, if we can all look at that and if we can, actually, um, I can also send this to the HBC if they want to.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
I'll send it to, um.
Yeah. Kevin?
I'll send it to Kevin.
Kevin?
Yeah.
To the, the other members. Alright, I don't have anything else on that.
But everything that was in the, the, um, or, the, uh, policy that you rewrote, um, Cal looks fine. Um, but, you know, again, there's just, I think, we're going to need to add to it and decide, um.
Yeah.
Cause we had also talked about, you know, needed to come in, get some approval, get a, if we do something like this, you know, get a particular science board.
Right. And if, if I remember, um, election signs, there was a specific, I would say, that does not allow any of us, but I think John to.
The highway department can, and the police department can if they feel it's a, um, hazard.
Right.
Oh, that's a visual.
Right, but if it's not, then I guess we have to call the candidates and say, you know, your sign's not allowed, come, come collect it. I'm thinking about that at the end.
I never, I know touchy political signs.
I'd have to check to see if a local ordinance would, would allow that.
Yeah.
You know, allow you guys to.
Yeah.
If, if it's in the center, I pull it and I keep it at the highway garage for two, two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's, okay.
Yeah, the, the road agent is really the only one that's allowed to do it.
Right, right. Okay.
It's like the beginning of, uh, moral, that town land there is good for.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good spot to put a sign, but yeah, I can see the comments even though.
Yeah, on the hill, it's, it's eye level for everybody coming up to the ground, so. It is a great spot.
Now, is that, is that little spit you're talking, well, what do they call it, the potters?
No.
The fiddlers, the fiddlers.
Fiddler in Seattle.
Land, is that little point there, um, from Kimball Pond onto moral, um, is that considered part of the center? Or is historic district?
Yeah, it's part of the historic district.
Right, cause, uh, Harry's house is.
Barry Finch's house.
Sales, yeah.
So, um, do we need to, I just thought of this, does this need to be town center sign policy or town historic district? Cause that includes that little point.
So we're also going all the way up to, um, the fire station?
Think we may want to make this specific, cause otherwise.
Yeah.
Let's, let us consider that, cause I'm sure Calvin will wa, will want to weigh in on that.
Yeah, and they stood, would you offer the, uh, the village, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so.
Well, if you, if you were specific, the center historic district.
Yeah.
I think that's probably a different place.
But I think that would be the, cause if you tried to do, shake the village historic district, then you may impact their signage up there.
Yeah. No, I, I would, if, if that little point is a popular spot for people to put things and, you know, we still, we didn't discuss at all any kind of signage on the cemetery lawn or in front of the town hall there, like where we put the cow for the farmer's market, I mean, we need to, we haven't specified. We say they're included, but we really haven't said what, if we're going to put, like, we were thinking about here, that's only this spot and there's a bunch of other spots around, so we need to figure that out. So there's a little bit more work to do, I think.
I agree. Yeah, absolutely. Alright.
That was really fun to make Calvin pose next to the signs and things.
Alright, hay press donation.
Yay!
So, I think I reported the last time around that you tried to get the hay press.
We were close.
The agricultural museum and they got all the way out there and decided they didn't want it.
Yeah.
Um, I contacted the, uh, the barn on the Hemmy, which is the old Herbie barn.
Hmm.
Um, and I never heard back. Um, Herbie Bachelor belongs to the East Coast Antique Tractor Club and they would like to have it and display it along with their antique tractors at fairs and other events that they go to. Um, so we would be donating it to Herbie Bachelor, um, he would be the caretaker of it and he would display it in that club and, um, it sounds good to me.
I think that's, yeah, so long as people are going to use it, want it, and ready to haul it around.
Have it up in life rather than sitting up in joy, in the joy. Garage is.
I want to see the veil A with it.
Back to the.
Can't get Dave Emerson to do it at the Canterbury Fair?
Maybe.
They, they'll step away from that.
Right.
It wouldn't be fun.
No, but I think that's a good, it's a good.
That's a, yeah.
Alright, uh.
So if he shows up with his truck tomorrow, it can be loaded? Okay.
It's on the highway ride.
Oh, yeah.
I would like it. Sure we want it to be out of there.
As he's tripping over it in the dark.
Lights do, yeah.
What is this big black box here?
Yeah, if, if all goes well, maybe you'll be rid of it by tomorrow. So, alright, capital improvement plan.
And before we get into this, cause this is going to be a little lengthy, um, fire engine bond.
Yup.
So we are going to have to take, uh, we put a deposit on the fire engine a couple of years ago.
Yup.
Um, the balance of the bond is four hundred ninety thousand dollars that we need to take.
Yup.
Um, we've filled out, the application is due on Friday to the bond bank.
Yup.
Um, we've done most of the, most of the application. The only thing that we need to talk to you guys about really is the length of the term.
Okay.
We got two, um, scenarios, one a ten year, one a fifteen year. Um, interest rate, interest rate for a ten year at this point is three point four four percent and the interest rate for fifteen year is three point nine four percent. So it has about a half percent. Um, the payments, and I had, I had mistakenly asked for four hundred thousand, not four hundred ninety, but the payments on our four hundred thousand dollar loan, uh, bond would be, um, on a, on a ten year, um, bond purchase would be forty six thousand, the first year would be forty six thousand eight eighty and it drops down a little bit and at the end is, it's forty thousand six eighty eight. Um, so you could probably bump that up, cause you go up another ninety thousand dollars. So it'd be about fifty thousand dollars to start with and then it would drop by about five or six thousand dollars over the, the, the six year, the ten years. Um, on a fifteen year term, again, on a four hundred thousand dollar bond, it'd be, the first payment would be thirty seven thousand eight eighty and the last payment would be twenty five, twenty five, twenty six thousand dollars, so.
Um, do you, did you calculate what that meant in, uh, total payout over the life, the difference between ten, thirty?
I didn't.
Right, ten, fifteen?
Well, uh, let's see.
I mean, you can.
The interest, so the interest paid on a ten year, um, a ten year bond would be seventy eight thousand eight hundred dollars and again, this is a four hundred thousand dollar loan.
Yup.
On a, uh, fifteen year, it'd be a hundred and twenty three thousand two hundred seventy five dollars.
Still small amount of change?
No.
Um, we only have one bond payment left on the, um, bridge and command car and that's it. We have no other bond payments.
Yup.
What we do, this would be the only bond payment that we'd be paying. We're a very good situation as far as, um, bond payments are, long-term debt.
Right. When, um, we're not currently putting away anything for a new fire engine.
No, but in our cap reserve account, uh, I mean, our capital improvement plan, it calls for us to start, start funding at twenty six.
Yeah.
Particularly talking with the fire chief, the fire truck, the fire engine that is due to be delivered in May, that is eight hundred and, I think it was eight, eight, it was eight twenty, but they gave us twenty thousand off.
Yeah.
Um, because we made an early payment.
Yeah.
Um, that truck now is one point two million dollars. The delivery is three to four years, and they give out up to five years.
Yup.
And they have clauses in the contracts now, but if there are price increases unforeseen with the manufacturer, then they will pass along to the customer.
Thank you very much.
Yup. So I guess, you know, as, as I look at the fleet, the, uh, engine that was purchased in twenty fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
Looking ahead, let's say that, not that we're going to do this, but let's say a town meeting twenty twenty six, we got a warrant article and, and said, okay, um, we're going to replace that twenty fifteen engine. We would not be able to replace that until twenty thirty or thirty one at the earliest.
Then we'd get a vehicle.
Then we would get a vehicle.
Well, it's with five years average, was it?
Yeah, three to five years is what they're saying.
So that truck by that time will, will, gonna have to start saving.
Well, I agree, I mean, certainly as, as we went through the budget process, that's, I think one of the things we have to look at now and, and I'm sure you're aware that there is a congressional, US congressional investigation going on, um, whether that, you know.
Who's aware of that?
Who knows? But, um, as we all know, it's just getting way more expensive and, and the timelines are just unbelievably long, at least in my opinion. So I, I guess as I look at ten versus fifteen, to bring it back to tonight's discussion, I'm leaning towards ten only because we get paid off in ten years versus fifteen.
Well, the, the difference is like, well, with, with the lower amount that you had them quote or, you know, do the numbers on is forty five thousand dollars.
No.
Um, difference in interest payments, so, you know, you could find a lot of places to use that.
And where, with the financial situation we're in, this would be our own long-term debt. And I think it would, it would really be a good idea to pay off as quick as possible.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think that's, that's logical and well thought out, so I need that, I'm for ten.
I would be for ten, yes.
For ten, alright. Okay.
Um, and just, I guess, a little bit of whole business, we did, um, we did, uh, complete the investments for the CDs.
Very good.
Um, so that is done, um, one matures December fourteenth and the other, uh, January fourteenth. And then we have a plan to roll over again in January.
Sounds good.
We'll keep you apprised of the interest that we're earning.
They're very good at letting you know when the things are coming due.
Yeah.
She'd be bad. I got an email, I got a letter in the mail, and then they called too, it's like, okay, I, I got.
Really wants you to do that.
I'm, I'm up, I'm up on it.
Yup.
Alright, so moving on to the capital cooler plan.
Yup.
You guys all have a, uh, sheet in front of you.
Yup.
Um, this is, we made some changes since, since last time.
Yup.
I already, I also made some changes tonight that I didn't, that hadn't, hadn't gotten done on this one. Um, so, starting at the top, um, as I talked, Rachel said earlier, the, um, heat pumps, um, we have down to fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in two thousand twenty seven, we're going to keep that in there, um, and again, that's fifty thousand and the methods of financing is fifty thousand as far as the property goes, is a property tax. That would be how Rachel said that the trustees are hoping to fund part of that, portion of that. If that still holds true, then that would reduce that, uh, property tax burden, but that's, that's what they're looking at.
But we can't guarantee that at this time.
Correct, and we don't have a cap reserve account for that, so that would be, um, that would be a warrant article for fifty thousand dollars potentially.
Yup.
In two thousand twenty seven. Um, replacing the water truck, moving down, replacing the water truck with a sliding water tank.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that is, uh, the anticipated cost is eighteen thousand dollars and John would like to do it in two thousand twenty six, because the current water truck is not serviceable.
Could receive.
Um, and the thought would be, instead of taking that out of property taxes, we would take eighteen thousand dollars from the highway equipment capital reserve account.
Okay.
So there would be an increase on that.
Yup.
From which account, the highway reserve?
The highway equipment capital reserve account. Which has, has, um, August of thirty, August, uh, the end of August this year, um, we have a hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars in our account. I deposited twenty, ten thousand dollars for last year, well, in this year.
And, um, that, uh, date, the a hundred and fifteen thousand, the amount you said as of when?
August thirty first.
Thank you. Okay.
And then the loader, um, you can see it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar anticipated cost. Um, I put down a hundred and sixty, um, from the cap reserve and it says here ninety thousand for property tax, so that's a potential. Um, but that, um, goes out to two thousand twenty seven and possibly twenty eight, depending on if you spend the fifteen thousand dollars this year, um, to replace, to fix it, it could last another year or two.
Yeah.
So if we kept it in place for two thousand twenty seven, uh, we may have, uh, let's see, in August, we had, uh, the end of August, we had a hundred and eighty seven thousand nine hundred and forty one dollars in there. We deposited thirty thousand dollars this year, if, if it lasts two years, that would be another sixty thousand dollars. So we would be very close to not having to spend any property tax money on, on two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yup.
So, um.
If we made it another two years.
So let's spend, it was fifteen thousand, put in, put fifteen thousand into the loader so that we stretch it out to having, um.
That would be the thought.
Okay. And if we put the fifteen thousand into it and it still doesn't survive? Then what?
Well, we have a hundred.
John!
We have a hundred, uh, almost a hundred eighty eight thousand dollars and so we could, we could take that hundred eighty eight thousand and, and then do the rest of it on property taxes.
Alright.
Or we could take some money out of a highway equipment fund, however.
They're taking some out for the water tank.
Yeah, yes, and, um, we had, they had, they had a waste oil heater, it was twenty, twenty one thousand.
Yup.
Um, I've looked at prices for waste oil heaters.
Yeah.
I think that's high, I think twenty thousand would be the, the cost. Um, John and I still feel that that's a good idea.
Okay.
Um, we can get rid of our waste oil now, we were, one of the local garages over Loudon was taking it, then they said they weren't going to. Um, so we found a local logger that was going to take it, cause he has a waste oil burner, but he hasn't been able to take it the last couple of times. So the Loudon garage has decided they are going to take it.
Okay.
I think it's, it's a hit or miss type thing for us to keep taking it or trying to get it taken for free. Um, we could install this in the highway garage up here and certainly help with the heating costs of that building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that is one of the buildings where the doors are open and closed in the winter, an awful lot, and it loses a lot of heat up there. And I think, in my mind, I think we would, we'd be able to cut our heating bills, a twenty thousand dollar investment.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what the payback would be, I think that would have to be calculated out somehow, but.
Yeah.
Is there a way to calculate that?
I, I don't know, because, because it would, I think it would be difficult, because we don't, we don't have a way to separate the heat costs for that section of the building out from the rest of the building. It's all, it's all fire.
You could probably guess to me.
Yeah.
Just by fire.
Yeah, I mean, I could have one of the, one of the energy auditing companies tell us what they think of a heat loss is on that building, on that section of the building.
Yeah.
And we could say, okay, well, what's the heat loss? And then we could have them divide up the heat losses for the other sections and then, then figure it out that way.
Yeah, yeah. John, the waste oil container at the transfer station is still locked, right?
Yes.
So when, if I show up with a gallon or two or five of waste oil.
He, he puts it aside until he has time to pour it in himself.
Okay, does he check it though to make sure there's not like gasoline or?
No, he doesn't have.
So we, we looked into testing for that and apparently the test kit is very expensive.
Correct.
Um, uh, the last time we, we knew it was contaminated was when the company came to get it and they said there's, there's something else in this and they didn't want it.
Yup.
So we had, um, Clean Harbors come and they tested it and, and they, you know, that's their business, so that's part of their cost.
Yeah.
Um, but it is, it is expensive to do.
Yeah.
Um, so there is no, apparently there's nothing on the market that, according to, uh, Clean Harbors, um, or DES that we could, like a, like a test strip that we could put in and check it to see if there's, um, some could care can come.
Yeah. And I, so I guess a couple of concerns certainly that, that may come up is, are we potentially burning things we should? And what are the environmental consequences if we do that?
Those were the first two, and also what is the, um, harm to the equipment that we may potentially be buying for twenty thousand dollars? I'd put environmental above that one.
I, I really don't have the answers to those questions.
Correct.
Boy, I'd want to know them before we start burning oil in there, e, even if it's good for the heat, uh, it just seems like, I mean, if, if it was contaminated enough that they wouldn't take it and somebody is throwing a bunch of who knows what? PFOS in there or, or gasoline.
So I think the last time it was, uh, found that there was a combination of somebody put, um, either kerosene or gasoline in it, um, and then there was a concern that there may have been antifreeze mixed in with it somehow.
I think I remember that. Yeah, will those burn in the waste?
Kerosene and gasoline will.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, I don't, I don't know enough about them, particularly the newer equipment, to know, I think we'd have to talk to a vendor and see what they say.
Yeah, I, I'd be curious and I, I think Beth has a very good point there.
Well, yeah, because I can see waste oil is going to burn in one way, but if all of a sudden you get a bunch of gasoline in there, so you're just going to push. And then the fire department will have to put out the highway department, none of that will be good. Okay, oh, do it on a Monday night, they can practice, but, um, probably not something they.
Okay, well, I will check, I'll check with vendors and see what, if they can give us the answers to those questions. But it is on there.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I'd like to keep it on there for now, if it's possible.
Yup, and we'll just, we'll investigate further.
Again, this is a capital improvement plan.
Yup.
It's not anything set in stone, you can deviate from it at any time. Um, which brings us down to the construction of the new salt shed.
Yup.
I'm not sure why that was included. Um, I don't know if it's a result of someone talking about the Harry's transfer station plan or, or what, I'm, I'm not sure, but John doesn't feel we need that in there, correct, John?
Okay.
No, we didn't, Harry said it couldn't go in the highway garage, so.
Yeah.
So if, if it was anywhere, it wouldn't be in highway department anyway.
Right, we.
Okay.
I mean, the, the Harry's, Harry's plan has the potential of relocating it down to the transfer station.
Yeah.
But again, that's something that, that has to be that, that whole Harry's report needs to be discussed further.
Oh, yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to include it unless.
No, alright, so that's gone.
Yeah.
And then replace the two thousand eleven international dump truck, uh, T one.
Mm-hmm.
It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, we have a hundred and twenty five of the property tax, a hundred and five, twenty five of the cap reserve. I think John and I have talked, take, take, uh, part of it out of the, um, in fact, we have, we have a hundred and twenty eight thousand in there now. So if we put thirty thousand in it last, this, the spring, the summer, if we stayed with putting thirty thousand in it, if we bought it, if we had a warrant article to purchase one and use and deposit thirty thousand in again, that would, that would give us a hundred and fifty thousand. And then we could fund the hundred, a hundred thousand from the highway equipment fund.
Gotcha.
I know.
Even by taking, even by taking fifteen thousand dollars or eighteen thousand dollars for the, for the water truck, the sliding water tank.
So instead of coming to explain this all to me again because I missed a couple of steps in there. Cal is taking excellent minutes and I'll read what you just said about the step-by-step because.
So it sounds like it would be partially from the CRF for this and partially from the CRF for highway equipment and so really it would just be thirty K added to the CRF, so it's really.
Correct, which we normally do.
Which we normally use, so it's a, that thirty K is still coming from taxes, but that's a normal.
Right, there would be no increase to the tax rate because of that.
So the fact that this says a hundred and twenty-five K from property taxes.
That, I would change that to say a hundred and twenty-five, well, a hundred from the equipment cap reserve.
Okay.
And a hundred and fifty from the truck cap reserve.
Got it. That's what I needed. Nine hundred and fifty from, wait, I can read this. Truck cap reserve. Thank you.
And then moving down to the police department, oh, sorry, fire department. Replacement of rescue one. We have, we have it as a hundred thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-six. That's looking here. The fire chief has said that the current rescue has some significant electrical issues, rust issues, frame, the frame has been repaired, heat lights have, light to get something else this year.
Good night, John, thank you.
Good night, John. He would like to take the current command car, his pickup truck, and downgrade it or move it to a rescue. Because the new engine will be a rescue, rescue engine, will have the extrication tools on it and other heavy equipment, rescue, extrication tools, things like that. So they're not gonna need as big of a truck as they currently have. And so his thought would be to use his current pickup truck as a rescue, which would respond to medical emergencies and other smaller rescue calls. And buy a new command car, which would be in the, in the, he already has, the cost of a truck is about fifty thousand and equipment would be thirty thousand, so you're looking at eighty thousand. He said if you kept it at a hundred thousand for the capital reserve account, then that would suffice for that.
For both things, for use, for making his pickup into a, okay.
Yes.
So for the same price, his rescue, his pickup truck becomes a rescue vehicle and we get a new command car?
Correct.
All right, for the hundred thousand.
Correct.
Yeah. It's a good plan.
And again, the rescue, that vehicle would not be going on as many calls as it is now. So that's why he feels the pickup truck was the price.
Okay, and that's because the new fire truck is.
The new fire engine is gonna house the heavy, the rescue equipment that is now housed on rescue one.
Okay.
And if we go down to the police driver next, we have a unit number three, sixty-seven thousand dollars for new police cruiser. The police chief feels he may have that in his budget, in his operating budget this year, so that's why it's in two thousand twenty-five. He's gonna wait until the envelope member to see if that's what he can do. I know we'll have a pretty good handle on it. We would probably have to encumber that money, we'd probably have to get an invoice from, from somebody and encumber the money and, and that. It would be delivered in twenty-six at some point. The other thing on the dump truck was that if we order in March, and this is the moral of the reason why John wants to order this year, or in two thousand twenty-six, if we order in March, we would probably take delivery in August sometime of the vehicle. And the way equipment finances have been going, we would not get it until following January or February. So that's why he feels that he needs it. So, and then.
That's the two thousand eleven Dodge, I mean, the International Dump and Plow Truck?
Correct. And then unit number four, the other police cruiser, Justin would want to try and replace that in two thousand twenty-six. And you can see the next ones are due out two thousand twenty-nine.
And just so I can finish this scribble, so if John orders the, the new dump truck in two thousand twenty-six, we might get it twenty twenty-seven or from twenty-eight?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
Most likely when it would become operational. If you look further down under bond payments. We have the Gold Star bond.
No. Gold Star shouldn't be in there.
Oh, it's not, yeah, I'm sorry, that shouldn't be Gold Star.
He took that out last time too.
Bridge, command car cruisers.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, because it's a twenty twenty-six, twenty-five, that was the Gold Star.
Yeah.
So we're down to fifty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars in two thousand twenty-six for a bond payment. But we also have to include the four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the fire truck. And we put fifty thousand dollars in there, it should not be in twenty-five, it should be starting in twenty-six.
For the fire truck, that should be.
For the fire truck.
Yeah.
So nothing in twenty-five?
Nothing in twenty-five. The, if you go further down, the, when Central Energy Planning puts this together for us, they did not include any, any, it's an Excel spreadsheet, but they didn't do any formulas in any of the. So we're unsure of how they came up with some of the numbers in the lower section. We contacted them today and they are gonna send us the formulas. Because I, Jan and I looked at it today and I couldn't figure out where they came up with these numbers, so.
New appreciation for Excel formulas after looking at the budget in the year.
The only other thing on this that is not in here, as we talked about earlier, was a new fire engine that we should probably include and start making payments for in two thousand twenty-six. So.
So on the fire and rescue we should add?
Yeah, so I'm gonna go back and we're gonna try and clean this up and get it ready for the planning board for their meeting on the twenty-eighth.
It's gonna be a busy night. You, I know you're in the loop with.
Yes.
Respect to it.
Yeah. So.
Twenty-eighth is, Meridian's coming back?
They are coming back.
Ask for continuance.
Yeah.
So we'll try and get this cleaned up. I'll send a copy out to you guys and then send a copy to the Pirate Heads for a quick review and then send to the planning board and hopefully we can follow. Again, this is subject to change, you know, depending on what happens. But that, that is kind of where we're at.
Does this go through the budget committee as well?
It, it will, yes.
And the twenty-eighth, we have the meeting at CES with the school board at six. So we may be late getting here, I don't know how long.
Yeah, it usually takes, they, they usually take you first thing. And it takes half an hour or so at the most. It's really, the big discussion should be the budget upcoming and here you go. We're looking at, you know, here's a couple of capital expenses. There is not a huge impact to the tax rate, however, if we start playing away for a fire truck and we have to build up the building maintenance, the power for him and a couple others that we're looking at, those are some expenses that are, that we're looking at.
So, I'm sorry, Scott, when is the, the school board meeting on the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth, yeah, six P M. at the elementary school.
What about the public listening sessions for the?
You can't be in two places at once.
But that is happening also then, okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, so school, somehow I didn't get school board on there.
Yeah, as I said, the last one we had literally one person showed up.
I know, I was, I think it was me.
No, former select board.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, so school board, six P M. that night, the twenty-eighth.
Correct. Yeah, in the library, I think this is typically.
In the, in the gym.
Gym?
In the, yeah, CES gym.
And now we're down to select board representatives reports.
I saw that on. I looked for it carefully and I saw.
I can't remember, who does Tricentennial Committee, is that you or me?
No, that's you. I missed a second, but I can, I can weigh in because I've been there.
Yes, you can. So let's start with that then. So Tricentennial Committee just met and we're moving forward with a number of things for the Tricentennial. The challenge core and design, Beth and I are gonna stay after tonight's meeting and just, I wanna make sure I've got the approved design to send out to the company for a revised estimate. So that's looking good. We're also looking at T-shirts.
Uh, yes. T-shirts, stickers?
Yeah, stickers.
And we have a quick update from Myrna at the DMV. They're texting Jeff at the Sublimation Shop and she'll email us when the director officially signs off so we can start actually printing licenses. So that's.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Coming along.
And that's all I can think of for Tricentennial Committee.
Uh, yeah, there's background stuff like trying to figure out how to make the, the online store work better on the website. Yeah, T, you know, we're, we're basically trying to figure out how to start raising funds to support other things. But my question is, and I'm, I'm actually glad it just came up. At some point, I think the committee is going to come to the town to ask the town to help fund some of their, you know, their piggy bank. They, we did get a five hundred dollar grant, grant, I guess you would call it, from the Canterbury Fund. But, you know, they keep mentioning the town's input, but I don't know how that works. And I don't know what we, where we put that or where it comes out of or how much they're expecting. They just kind of keep saying it, but not, I think nobody has a specific idea of what the ask might be. So I have no idea what we could offer. I mean, I think we'll wait for the committee to ask, but we still have to come up. Erin Beeger is excellent as the treasurer, so she's putting together a lot of the budgeting and at some point we'll say, okay, we've got this big event and we want to whatever, and can the town weigh in? But what does that even come out of in, I mean, which part does that come out of? Or don't we know?
It would, it would, it would most likely be a warrant article in two thousand twenty-seven at the town meeting to expend some kind of funds. And it would have to come out of the property tax, it would be increased the property taxes.
There's not like, what do you call patriotic events?
Well, we have patriotic, you know, things, yeah, we do have line item, which is the fireworks in the, the world. That's, that's what we have in that, that section of the town report. That's the operating expense, being a one-time expense, it would just should be a warrant article.
Okay, and that couldn't happen until two thousand twenty-seven?
Unless you put something in the, the warrant on two thousand twenty-six to say you wanna put, the thing is, you would have, if you, if you had a warrant article and passed for a specific sum, if you didn't spend it in two thousand twenty-six, you would have to have some kind of invoice so we could encumber it to two thousand twenty-seven.
Got it.
So you couldn't say, we just wanna put fifty thousand dollars away for the, you know, celebration and then not have any way of knowing how this, what you're gonna spend on and encumber it.
That's, I don't, and I don't think anybody realizes how that works, I'm glad I asked because then we can pass that along and start to.
Well, that's why I'm encouraging them.
The only other way you could do it is in, is in two thousand twenty-six, you could establish a cap reserve account, make a deposit into it. And then in two thousand twenty-seven, when the event happens, you spend all the money and in two thousand twenty-eight, town meeting, you do away with that cap reserve account.
And if there's anything left in it, you give it back?
You would, yeah, go back in the tax bills.
Okay. That's really good, so again, I'm assuming Cal's excellent notes got, took that and I will copy that and paste it and send it off to Heidi, Naomi and Erin to put in their collective.
Yeah, I think what the Tricentennial Committee needs to do is, is figure out something, either T-shirt sales, sticker sales, whatever, and, and raise money sooner rather than later.
Well, and I think the, the one issue with the committee is that we're still not exactly sure what that money's going to be spent on, which is why I know that Naomi and Erin are very keen on people filling in those worksheets. But as far as big events, those are still nebulous enough that nobody knows what it's gonna cost to do a road repair. There's still, there's still a lot to shake down.
Website from Nottingham help at all?
I don't know.
I thought I forwarded that to you, right? Because Nottingham had their Tricentennial.
You're right.
Okay.
I will double check, I looked at it at the time.
And I, that listed what they did for events, they had a parade and it was like a year-long celebration.
Yeah, yeah.
That seems to be the way Tricentennial was going, is kind of a year-long celebration.
Hold on. Um, thank you for reminding me about that, I'm not sure, I know I looked at it at the time, but then I'm not sure if I passed it along, so I will make sure to. Thank you.
Good. And then moving on to planning board, so we did finish the solid waste chapter. So we need, I believe President is gonna schedule a public hearing on that. So I, I have not heard of it yet, but it is done. So I'm very happy to see that. And as you're aware, I'm sure Meridian requested another continuance. So they're appearing on the twenty-eighth with a revised plan, which I don't believe, have you gotten anything?
Uh, it was on my list today, I contacted Sam Poisey to ask him to submit something to Land Use Administrator this week so the planning board can see it before the meeting.
We need time to examine it.
So I, well, emailing was Poisey telling me, well, I'm here. I was about to back up your office. I did have a Zoom meeting with Sam Poisey, Levi, their attorney and Nottingham, essentially, planning a couple of weeks ago on a Thursday, discussed the engineer's reports. They asked for a couple of changes and so, you know.
Oh, yeah, that was gonna be my question, if that got settled finally.
I don't know that.
I guess we'll see.
In process.
When we see.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's an unknown. Uh, other than that, you know, and this is my opinion, but we continue to not have alternates show up. but we continue to not have alternates show up at plenty of meetings. And, you know, and we barely got a forum at our last meeting.
Well, alternates and full members.
There were, yeah, there were no alternates.
Yeah.
So we didn't, we didn't have anybody we could even have used. And I, I believe there were only six.
Yeah, there were two members missing, yeah.
So, so it continues to be an issue, as far as I'm concerned.
Um, and consider, concerning, uh, chapter, uh, nine there, um, can he schedule a public hearing on it before, I mean, it's been revised and everybody's gotta read it first before he schedules us? Wouldn't you be reading it at the next meeting, or did you send it out already?
Uh, I was supposed to finish it, I think I moved it today, um, I did not, yeah. So hopefully tomorrow I'll send it out and then you guys can review it. If there is anything that needs changing, then we can do it at the twenty-eighth meeting and, um, that'll notice it for the November, yeah, for the November.
Okay.
And that might change, it's supposed to be November eleventh, but that's a holiday, so Jan sort of followed Brendan.
Yeah, the education as well, which.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I can't think of anything else from planning board.
November, oh, okay, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but then, like, the subject could change.
It's my parents' anniversary, you can't possibly have a meeting on that day. Okay.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, um, well, let's start with something interesting, uh, Conservation Commission. Um, Conservation Commission just keeps talking along. Um, they worked on their process for minutes, um, they took care of their budget items, they didn't have any permits, um, they had, oh, like seven things on their property management list that they took care of. Um, we are going to be consulting local hunters considering safety zone signage, uh, because, um, we weren't sure, there were signs that went up and we weren't exactly sure, um, how important it was to actually have the signs or not, so there's an ongoing questioning going, the local hunters. Um, they walked, um, through the Briar Bush Road Town Forest with the County Forester and had a good talk with him. I think at the moment, they're not, there's nothing to be done there, they didn't feel. Uh, but if there is, I'm sure they'll, they'll report on that. Um. They said they were sending their, um, input to the, um, on the contaminated soil ordinance, uh, to the selectmen. And that, if they haven't just sent an email on it, um, at our last minutes, reflect what, why I thought that they were adding to it, so.
Mm-hmm.
I believe that it's back to the Conservation Commission talking with the planning board about that. And, and they made contact, uh, at the last meeting when Ken started, and so, you know, that's all set.
Okay.
Um, they have a subcommittee that's meeting and discussing, um, issues related to a potential wetland setback ordinance, so they're working on that. And, um, yeah, they've got workday scheduled for town properties. Um, they've got signs going up, um, on, um, the Scudac Trail. They, they do a good job, they chug along.
It's good.
Um, the Energy Committee, uh, the meeting that was scheduled for October thirteenth was canceled because it was not a forum. Uh, we are supposed to be meeting tomorrow night. Um, and we'll see if that happens because, again, there's two members. There should be three for us to meet. There are two that are definitely going to be there and we don't know about the other. So that being, you know, again, we'll see how that goes. Uh, but the last, um, the agenda has, you know, again, talking about the L E D project or the, you know, up at the municipal center and the, um, streetlights. Um, they want to continue talking about the Soul Smart, um, guide for solar-friendly zoning. Um, we are, wanna talk about education initiatives in the town, like they've done several workshops like the, the petting zoo and the, you know, uh, electric car ownership. I think they have ideas for some more of those. Um, Window Dressers is chugging along and that's going to be going on in November, I think. And that's the Energy Committee. Um, they did have, uh, two members who stepped down. So Stephen Luntall and Sarah Schumpfer. Um, so again, we are looking for new members. Uh, I'm currently acting as, no, I'm not acting as secretary, but we don't, they have somebody who's acting as secretary. Um, and they're also talking about the solar, we talked a little bit about the solar checklist today. They still are interested in, in working with Soul Smart and coming up with a solar checklist for the town, um, whether or not, how useful that will be, remains to be determined, how about that?
Yeah.
And then, um, I also had the report from Jeff Voltrano about the walkthrough that he did with, uh, World Energy Services. Um, and, you know, as we discussed this morning, the most immediate thing that they identified is that none of the office spacing is L E D. So that was a big thing that, um, this World Energy Services picked out. And I think, you know, the company that, that we talked about earlier in this meeting, um, didn't talk to about that, so that's the, that's the Energy Committee. C C P C Edgar, here we are. Um, our photo needs to be redone, we had a photo op, apparently we were all grim and horrible looking, so we have to have our photo retaken. I'm not sure how bad we could be, but, but all this cursed, no good, all right. Uh, so we're still, um, we had Edgar's report on transferring the adder funds and we have to figure out what to do about the warrant article to accept those funds, which are going to be sitting in the general fund until, uh, March. Um, and how we can, um, what kind of wording we can use so that maybe we don't have to do that every year, should we get adder funds, but we'll talk about that. Um, Beth McGwin, uh, gave a report on, uh, the, there's a big, long acronym which is A S P I R E. I do not know what it means, but it's a, a C P C N H, um, program to attract local renewable energy projects. Um, she's going to their workshop or their seminars to find out more about that. Um, there didn't seem to be any new projects coming down from C P C N H that, that the town can take advantage of. Um, we're continuing to plan for town education about how to choose rates. So there's, doesn't seem to be many people, if anybody, opting up to the rate that has an adder. And we also need to, um, we're trying to investigate how, um, people new to town actually get on community power, cuz we don't really know. Until they come in, they set up their account with Unitil or whoever, when do they actually get on to see, to community power, we don't know, but we're going to find out. That's one of our tasks.
That's a really good question, actually.
Yeah, and then, uh, new member prospects, um, C E C P C really does need new members. I'm currently acting as secretary there and there is no change. So we have to, um, we have to take care of that sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
And that's the G C P C in Conservation. That does it for me, I think, on tricentennial.
Right.
Everybody chugging along, but new membership release, if anybody out there is listening, uh, um, you know, educating, uh, at the moment, that is, uh, Community Power's biggest goal.
I think you could.
Is to get people to.
Most committees in this town would, that would be, you know, we need new members, I mean.
Well, when you get to the point that you can't function, that's, because you don't have a forum, that's,
Yeah.
that's, that's not helpful.
What else?
The only other thing I have is, you've got a copy of the P and L.
Yes, indeed.
Um, please take some time to go through it, particularly in the areas of, um, equipment maintenance or highway and fire.
Yeah.
You got anything else, Scott?
Um, yeah, I was just looking to see if I could locate the P and L that I should have had here, but I think I've got it in my pile of stuff, that's all that stuff. Um, did you talk with the folks in the building in Concord where you work with the lighting sensors?
Yes, so the, um.
That probably should have asked you that when we were talking about lighting sensors earlier, but.
So the high bay areas of that campus do not have motion detectors.
Ah.
And I think the, um, motion detector project that the state did in that campus was done probably five years ago now. And I don't think back then the technology existed.
Okay.
So it is in every other office, bathroom, classroom, it, it's everywhere else except for the high bay areas, which is the firehouse.
Oh, okay.
So, and, and it works fine, um, they do, they have completely switched over to L E D lighting. Um, and I forget how much it's saving the taxpayers, but it's significant, just for that campus. So, um, you know, we have occasional glitches with the, um, motion detectors, so I've, and I think I talked about, you know, people that remain in the bathroom for a period of time.
Or what, the broom, the broomsticks and the?
Yeah.
The, okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and the only other thing I had was, did we get, um, we were going to see if we could get some more information, and by we, I mean the royal we. Um, more information from Representative Kimbrel, she's about, uh, H B three fourteen, that they asked us to write a letter about and then we said, do we or don't we, or has that been cast, the letter's writing?
I haven't, um, sent out those questions yet.
Right.
Cuz I have it on my to-do list to ask an H and A and, um, well, actually, I should probably first look at the result of the, the talk, yeah. Um, to see if it is still alive.
Right.
Okay, that was the only other thing, when I was trolling through them, it's, I find it really helpful to read the draft notes and say, oh, yeah, we were gonna ask about, again, the royal we.
Yeah.
But it's, it's very helpful to jog my memory, but I will track down, thank you, that link that you carefully sent me to Nottingham Tricentennial and, uh, off we go.
Cool, all right, I'm gonna get the motion detector, John.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
I.